Good evening and welcome to Latrobe City Council's monthly council meeting. Tonight's meeting will be held virtually and I'm pleased to welcome the Deputy Mayor. I'm just looking for him on my screen, councillor Darren Howe, councillor Brad Law, councillor Kelly O'Callaghan, councillor Graham Middlemiss, councillor Tracy Lund, councillor Dale Harriman and councillor Dan Clancy and myself Sharon Gibson. Also, warm welcome to our CEO, Steve Piegasenti. Now, would you all join me in our opening prayer and recognition of the traditional owners? Okay, "Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, forever and ever. Amen." And if you'd also like to join me in acknowledging that we are meeting here today on the traditional land of the Baraklong people, of the Kurnai nation, and we pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging. And if there's any elders online, we would also like to acknowledge you. Thank you. Now, a bit of housekeeping. Conditions of entry, well, it's a bit different because we are online. But our council meetings are governed by a set of rules which includes provisions relating to respectful and courteous behaviour. Please note that no portion of this meeting may be recorded or broadcast without the permission of council or the chair, and this permission may be revoked. Now, I'd also like to say that members of the community will be attending virtually. For tonight's public participation item, for those participating in the meeting via audiovisual, please note your voice or image may be recorded or captured. Now, we have one apology tonight, and that's councillor Melissa Ferguson. And all other councillors are present with us tonight. Now, part of the rules of actually having the meeting via, what is it? YouTube is you have to see and hear all councillors. Now, I have gone through that with the councillors before the meeting and everybody can see and hear, so we're good to go. Now, councillors, do we have any declarations of interest, please? Councillor Law?
18.1, just general to Hayeswood.
No worries. Thank you. Any other councillor? Councillor Harriman?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I have two, both in item 15.1, Resolution 2 and Resolution 3.
No worries. Thank you. I saw your hand up, councillor Lund.
Sorry, I'm not on mute, sorry. 15.1, Resolution 5.
No worries. Sorry, and I should ask each one of you whether it's material or general.
The material.
Yep, no worries.
Mine's a general, Madam Mayor, and I have declared it to the CEO previously.
Yes, and councillor Law said general as well. Councillor Clancy, have you got one as well, please?
I have three, Madam Mayor. This is in the Community Grants at 15.1. As the other councillors have said, mine are in Attachment 2 and Attachment 4. And I have two that are a material interest and one that is of a general interest with the Trelgyn Carols by Candlelight. But once again, they have been submitted already to the CEO, so thank you.
No worries. Thank you very much. Any other councillors? Nope. All right. Thank you very much, councillors. Now, the first item on our agenda is, oh, hang on, is the adoption of the minutes. Do I have a mover for that, please? Councillor Middlemiss, moving. Councillor Howe, seconding. Any opposition? Nope. Anybody wish to speak? Nope. I declare it's carried unanimously. Thank you for that. Okay. Now, does any councillor wish to do any acknowledgements, please? Councillor Law?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge the passing of one of our fantastic musicians in Pattie O'Dowd. It was his music and the O'Dowd family band have been part of our community for the best part of the last 50 odd years and have done an enormous amount of community work, volunteer work with their music. Yeah, right across, yeah, Latrobe City and probably throughout Victoria. You know, just an icon family and he'll be sadly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're right, he was an icon for not just New Borough, where he lived most of his life, but the whole of the valley and further afield. And he will be sadly, sadly missed. Okay, any other councillor? Councillor Callaghan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and also pass on my condolences to the O'Dowd family and thank you to councillor Law. Just wanted to acknowledge all of the workers, and they're not just health and allied, but emergency logistics and others who've really been under the pump and have stepped up during the local outbreak of COVID in relation to everything, testing, logistics, tracing, and also vaccination. It hasn't been easy. I know, I'm extremely grateful and I'm sure my council colleagues are as well for all of the work and the very long hours that people are putting in and just wanted to acknowledge their work and know that it is appreciated. And we're very grateful, as I know you've passed on to many of their colleagues, Madam Mayor, our gratitude for everything they're doing to try and keep our community safe during a very difficult time. Thank you.
No worries. Yes, I have. Thank you very much. Was there another councillor? Councillor Harriman?
Madam Mayor, it's becoming a bit of a habit of mine, unfortunately, to keep putting up congratulations to two of our junior female basketballers, who now are two of Australia's senior basketballers. The Australian Women's Open Basketball Team is competing in the Asian Games and we're being very well represented by former Trelgyn Teabird, and I'm glad to say she still dons the Teabird top every now and again in Jade Melbourne, and a former Moi Media basketballer in Jazz Shelly. I don't know whether people have been following it, but it's been an outstanding effort by the Australian team and both girls have performed exceptionally well. So I just wanted to pass on that congratulations. They've both come out of the Under-19 World Championships and now representing the Australian women's team. I just think it's a fantastic outcome that we've got two of the 10 playing on court have come from Latrobe City. So I just wanted to pass on the congratulations to both those girls again, or young ladies. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. And I have had the privilege of speaking to Jazz while she was actually overseas at uni. Any other councillors? Councillor Clancy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge everyone who's doing the right thing at the moment during this pandemic. And I think that for the last 18 months or so since March last year, we've been aware of the pandemic. It is across the entire world. We're aware of it, what's happening. But now it's on our doorstep. It's within Latrobe City in the last fortnight. And even though we only have 58 active cases across our city, there's many, many more tens and probably hundreds of other people who are doing the right thing by isolating in this time as well. I've spoken to people who, with no fault of their own, have attended a shop and they need to be sitting at home for 14 days or that someone, you know, has come to them, you know, via their network and that they need to do the right thing now. So there's lots and lots of people who are doing the right thing. Our vaccination rates are up. Our testing rates are doing fantastic. So for our community who are all doing the right thing, my hat off to you and my acknowledgement of everything that you're doing and to the people who have unfortunately contracted this virus. We hope you get well soon and a speedy recovery to you. And for everyone else who's waiting on a test, we hope that they're negative results. But my acknowledgement to everyone who's doing the right thing across our entire municipality, it makes a big difference.
Well, it does make a big difference and it truly does for very, very many reasons. Some businesses are going to the wall as we speak and, you know, people pulling together, doing the right thing and working together as a community makes a big difference. So, and it is pleasing to note that our vaccination level has gone up. And I personally thank those who have looked at that and decided to do that and those who are able to. That would be gratefully appreciated. Thanks. Thanks for that. Okay, now we're up to public participation time, which is for members of the community who wish to speak to us in regards to an item on the agenda and you need to actually register before midday. Now, tonight we have no public questions, but we do have three speakers. Now, they're all on the one item and then they will be given three minutes to speak each. And afterwards, councillors will have the chance to ask some questions if they wish to. Now, they're all speaking on item 14.3, which is the use and development of land for a car wash and reduction of car parking requirements at 12 Shakespeare Street and 43 Queen's Parade in Trelgyn. Now, the first speaker is Mick Nicola or Nicola, sorry, Director of NC Property Group Proprietary Limited. Now, is Nick Reddy, sorry. Yes, he is. Okay, Mick, can you hear me? Okay, Mick, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, now, you have three minutes and after that, if you wish to wait and see if there's any questions, please.
Yep, no worries. Will do.
Okay, when you're ready.
Thanks. Good evening, councillors. My name is Mick Nicola. I'm one of two directors of NC Property Group. We originally purchased the land in 2018, identified the need for a car wash on this side of Trelgyn, which is expanding with new housing developments off Bang Street such as Emerald Waters, Dunbar Road and Astoria Estates. The site is surrounded by petrol stations, a few gyms, takeaway food and other commercial businesses. So there is no sensitive residential land directly adjoining or nearby this proposal. We feel the car wash would complement the services offered by the two adjoining petrol stations. The site was previously used by a car wash some years ago when the adjoining petrol station was owned by Horizon. So the petrol, and also too, the petrol stations opposite the site is also in 24-hour operation. So the site would not be the first business in the area with unrestricted hours of use. We initially had meetings with councillors, with the planning department, to discuss the proposal very early in the design phase and feel we followed the direction that were given and met all the guidelines for the area at the time. As advised, we also engage professional planning and traffic engineering consultants to provide guidance early in the design process. And we've addressed all the matters and concerns that they have and throughout the plan, the whole application process. So in conclusion, we seek council support in improving the planning permit application. And I thank you all very much for your time for listening and would happily answer any questions that you may have about it.
No worries. Thank you very much, Mick. Councillors, do you have any questions? Councillor Harriman?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Sorry, Mick. I'm just trying to get my head around where it is. Is this where the old, was it Horizon Car Wash used to be or next to the old Horizon Car Wash?
It was directly next to the Horizon Car Wash, so the property is actually Curves Gym at the moment. So the old car wash was right on the boundary line of this property and of the Horizon. So it was right, right there where we're going to.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. Thanks.
No worries.
No worries. Any other councillor wish to ask a question? Councillor Clancy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just on the conditions, Mick, there's clearly a number of conditions that come with the decision to grant this permit. Are those conditions able to be met between you and your partners?
Yes, yep, they're all, well, not a problem. Definitely can meet those.
Right, okay. No, it's just, there was a lot of them, you know, looking through it. There was no concern there?
No, no, they're all, they're all fine.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
No worries. Thank you. Any other councillor wish to ask a question? No? Thank you very much for your time, Mick.
No worries. Thanks, guys. See ya.
Bye. Okay, next person we have is Nicole Stowe. If you would like to bring her in, yes, she's coming in now. Now, Nicole is the principal town planner for Beveridge Williams and is acting on behalf of NC Property Group. Okay, we're just waiting for her to connect.
I think she's using Graham Middlemiss's internet, Madam Mayor. It's the microphone came on. I'm sure Nicole can turn her camera on.
Nicole, can you hear me? And if you can, can you turn your camera on, please? Oh, there we go. Okay, Nicole, you've done this before, so, you know, you've got three minutes. And then afterwards, if we've got any questions for you, when you're ready. You might want to unmute yourself, though.
A bit rusty. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak in relation to the planning permit application for a car wash in Trelgyn. My name is Nicole Stowe. I'm a principal town planner with Beveridge Williams and work in our company's Trelgyn office. Everidge Williams was appointed by Michael Nicola and Ryan Corcott of NC Property Group to apply for this planning permit. Our company has worked with Michael Nicola on numerous other commercial, industrial and residential development projects in Trelgyn over the past 10 years. Michael is always willing to take on board advice from our team and accommodate changes as required. He has proven to be a developer who takes considerable pride in developing projects that set a benchmark standard in design. This proposed development is no exception. The design is a result of a comprehensive site context, traffic impact and urban design review, which was undertaken prior to lodgment of the permit application. This process commenced with a pre-application meeting between our clients and council statutory planning department, which confirmed that the proposal was appropriately located based on the town structure plan and existing uses on adjoining and nearby properties. The development site is within a commercial area that sits just outside the Trelgyn Activity Centre precinct. It's characterised by a range of commercial uses that benefit from their access to an arterial road. The proposed car wash will complement the businesses surrounding the site, which include a 24-hour Liberty petrol station, a United petrol station, Evans patrolling fuel depot, a BP truck stop, an indoor gym, dance studio and takeaway food. Car wash will be operational 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This is appropriate given the commercial nature of its surrounds. The nearest dwellings are located at least 90 metres from the site and are unlikely to be impacted by the low-level noise associated with the car wash, generated by low-speed vehicle movements, water spraying and vacuuming. The development has been designed to provide an appropriate interface to both Shakespeare Street and Queen's Parade and will vastly improve the appearance of the site through the use of contemporary building materials, landscaping and creation of viewlines between the two streets. An outcome specifically encouraged by council's adopted urban design guidelines for commercial development. A traffic impact assessment which included vehicle turning movement surveys, a vehicle sweat path analysis and a post-development traffic generation calculation concluded that the internal vehicle circulation access egress arrangements met required standards and the car wash would not have any significant traffic impact on the surrounding road network. Both Vic Roads and council's infrastructure engineering department reviewed the assessment and offered no objection to the proposal. Regardless, our clients still considered the objections to the application from members of the public and noted concerns regarding increased traffic movements in Queen's Parade. To address this, they offered to remove the car wash exit onto Queen's Parade, so that all vehicles but exit the site via Shakespeare Street. This change has been included in the permit conditions. In summary, the car wash has been appropriately designed and will be entirely compatible with the surrounding businesses. The permit conditions provide a level of control over the future operation of the car wash to ensure any potential energy impacts are minimised. I'm seeking your support tonight in approving the planning permit for this development so my clients can move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillors, do you have any questions? Councillor Callaghan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Nicole. I'm just wondering, you're very familiar with the nature of these things being designed and developed, but in relation to any feedback that has been provided so far, can you just give us an indication on what changes have already been made or what considerations have been made in relation to this to make it, ensure it does fit within this local area?
Certainly, councillor. Look, initially, there was reconfiguration, internal layout of the car wash facility itself and how vehicles were going to move within the site and ensuring that there was adequate cubing area within the property itself, particularly in front of the auto wash. Apart from that, mainly just, you know, cosmetic changes to the look of the structure itself and some additional landscaping.
Yeah, I was going to ask about landscaping, but you've covered that off. Great. Thank you very much, Nicole. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
No worries. Did I see another councillor with their hand up? Councillor Clancy?
I did wave, but I was going to ask exactly the same question.
No worries. Okay, do I have any other councillor wish to ask a question, please? Nope. Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is, well, I've got Anne Sin. Now, Christine, is it, are you going under Anne or Christine?
Very much, Nicole.
Sorry. Christina, I've got you down as Anne. Are you going under Anne or Christine? You've got to unmute yourself.
And I need to change the label. I need to rename myself.
Oh, so it's going under Anne, is it?
No, it's going as Christine.
Thank you. No worries.
It's taking me a minute to do this.
Oh, that's all right. That's fine. Because in my agenda, I had it as Anne and I'm thinking...
Well, I'll go as Anne Christine.
Okay, well.
That's my full name.
No worries. Okay, you know the drill. You've got three minutes when you start and afterwards you may or may not have some questions. So when you're ready. So if you wish to start, Christine?
Oh, thank you very much. My sister-in-law and I own the property at 41 Queen's Parade, which is next to the proposed car wash. We became aware of a proposal to develop land upon receipt of a letter from Beveridge Williams and Co. So it was quite a surprise. So the proposed car wash is next door to our property and the proposal is for a plant room, five wash bays, four vacuum bays and a dog wash. Our reasons for objection are really fourfold. First of all, we're concerned about the car wash chemicals, which will be sprayed in a sensitive residential area. The chemicals commonly used to break down grime can be insidiously toxic. And that particular area of Queen's Parade has a lot of charming railway cottages, which were transferred there from Wild Halla. So it's a very charming residential area and a lot of people value living there. The other reason is we are concerned about the noise of high-pressure cleaners and compressors potentially impacting the residential area. And we believe that exceeding the EPA noise limit is unacceptable. Queen's Parade is a minor residential street and traffic congestion is unwelcome. And to have something like that operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we consider to be unacceptable. Councillor Harriman did ask the question about Horizon Car Wash, but I take my car to be washed out in the industrial area where the car sales are. And I am aware that 39 Queen's Parade is also owned by Mick Nicola and council have approved a development of 40 residential units at 39 Queen's Parade, which is on the other side of our property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine. Councillors, do I have any questions, please? No. Christine, you got out of that easy.
Thank you.
No worries. Thank you very much. I do have some questions of officers, but do you wish me to ask them now, Mr CEO, or afterwards?
If, I suppose at the time that the general item comes up, I would suggest, Madam Mayor, but if you had specific questions related to councillor, sorry, and Christine Sin's questions?
No worries. Well, it is actually because we were told that there was 90 metres between away, this development is 90 metres away from any residential, but councillor Sin is, sorry, sorry, Christine. She's saying that it's right next door to her property. And then we're also hearing from her that there's 40 residential units going to be developed the other side. So can I have that clarified, please?
Let's see, Acting General Manager of Assets and Presentations just tapped on my screen, Madam Mayor. Might be able to help me out with this one? Thanks, Jody.
No worries. True, Madam Mayor, if I may. The comment Mick Nicola made was that there was no residential dwelling bought in this site and technically that is correct. The property owned by Miss Sin is located at 41 Queen's Parade and the house has been demolished there recently, so there is no dwelling directly bought in the property. In terms of the property that you're referring to with the 40 units, that was a permanent proof back in 2010. I would have to check if that permanent is still valid. I'm not too sure if it's still valid, given the length of time it was originally approved. So that's something that we can take on notice, but, um, yep, I can confirm that now without checking my own records. Given the length of time the property was approved, I don't know that off the top of my head. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Christine. Okay. All right, that's an end to our public speakers for tonight, councillors, so we'll get back into the agenda. And the first item on our agenda is notice of motion 9.1, which is decriminalising sex work. Now, councillor Harriman, you put that...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, you put that motion in, so you are moving. Do I have a second to that motion, please? Anybody? Councillor Middlemiss. Okay, do I have any opposition, please? Councillor Clancy. Okay, councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak to your motion, please?
If I could, thanks, Madam Mayor, and I will concentrate most of my discussion on items two and three in the resolution. Basically, changes to the Sex Work Act and the Planning Act will allow brothels to operate anywhere, next to our homes, next to our kindergartens, next to our schools, next to daycare centres, women's refuges and churches. It will allow street solicitation to take place anywhere, in our parks, in our green spaces, in our shopping centres and our residential streets, at football grounds, at cricket grounds, at junior sporting events and outside our council facilities such as the Gibson Regional... the Gibson Regional Aquatic Centre and the Gibson Regional Indoor Sports Centre. It is this, and I guess my reason for putting this up, Madam Mayor, was not about the decriminalisation of the sex work per se, but how it's being decriminalised, what is being allowed and the changes to the Planning Act, which I'll get to. What it basically comes down to, Madam Mayor, is having street solicitation happening outside our sporting centres and outside our schools, how we make our neighbourhood safe for families. Is it what livable cities look like in the twenty-first century? The state government has given councils no time to engage with the community on changes that will have a huge impact on their neighbourhoods. Do we want brothels springing up like boarding houses? Or have them next to local cafes or next to our local baby shop? Do we want them in our shopping centres? This is what the changes to the Sex Worker Act and the Planning Act will bring about. Madam Mayor, I look, I go to point two. It says that the state government has said that it would have meaningful consultation with community and local government on any proposals. We've seen what is, is, or passes for what is meaningful conversation with local government and community with other planning agendas. We know that they go straight to the minister responsible and get a rubber stamp on them. We don't want this to be happening where we have an application for a brothel as a home business to go in opposite one of our schools, have a number of community jump up and down and complain about it, yet have it rubber stamped by the minister. It says we need community consideration must be, must form an integral consideration for any changes to the sex worker industry. It hasn't happened. This hasn't gone out for community consultation. It hasn't been discussed with many local government, if any at all. It hasn't allowed Latrobe City Council to go out to its community and discuss how we want to see this developed in our community. With item three, Madam Mayor, one of the big things of this is that it's, I notice I'm running out of time, so I'll leave it when I close, Madam Mayor.
You sure? You don't want an extension of time?
No, that's all right, Madam Mayor, that's fine.
No worries. Okay, thank you. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a rather a grab bag, I'd call it, of a resolution in that it brings a lot of things together. Many of the things that are opposed in this resolution, I have no problem with. In fact, decriminalising sex work, as far as I'm concerned, is a very innovative approach and I commend the government for it. Why I seconded this to allow discussion is there is an area in this proposal that concerns me. In the past, brothels were permitted in country towns, in regional cities, whatever, as long as they were a set distance from schools and a set distance from churches. So there was no restriction in, they largely ended up, as we all know, in our industrial zones. Excuse me. And I was quite comfortable with that. They were legalised. Nobody could claim offence as to where they were. And I thought that was quite a good arrangement. What I am concerned about now is that the planning provisions have largely been weakened and councillor, the councillor has, yeah, I know his name. Yeah, it's written on the bottom of the screen. But the councillor has highlighted what could happen in the worst circumstances. And I would have thought the government might have been better to consult with councils, might have been better to have given councils considerably more power over planning, where sex work could take place, particularly in residential zones, areas like that, et cetera. So I have a major comfort with a lot of where the government's going with this. I have discomfort on the detail, on the planning detail. And I look, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this. I mean, if I voted against it, I'm voting against a decriminalisation of sex work, which I support. But I want to oppose the planning proposals that are wrapped around this situation. And I'm delighted if I know how I get out of this, but I think the government's done the wrong thing. The planning proposal, the planning rules should have been given to councils, given them a lot more power to decide what's fitted well in their communities. In fact, I'm quite a supporter of what we've got at the moment. I don't see a problem with that. So I'm sitting on the fence full of splinters. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Middlemiss. Okay, councillor Clancy, do you wish to speak?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I'm much like councillor Middlemiss. I am, there's parts of this that I absolutely applaud and I think it's great. The problem that I have, much like councillor Middlemiss, is the length of the notice of motion and the content of, the amount of parts that are in it. Now, we have two, three and four and then we have, and five, and we have A, B. There's many parts to it. So that's the concern that I have. If it was a tighter, smaller notice of motion that actually was very concise on the action of council, then I'd have no problem supporting this because I completely understand what councillor Harriman's saying. And I do believe this is a very important discussion that we need to have. Some of the contents of the notice of motion, you know, which say things like, you know, ensure the full consultation with council and community or provide additional evidence around the health impact statement, the social impact statement. These are great. We would love those. I would absolutely put my hand up to support those. There has been a process that has been undertaken through this. There was community consultation done on this. It went from the thirteenth of August to the twenty-seventh of August. Now, Grant, that's only a fortnight. I believe it should have been longer. But there was something that was run through Engage Vic and this has been sent out to the community. It was in August this year. So this is well past. We're not in August anymore. We're in October. This is about to go to the parliament with a bill that the government will vote on in the incoming months, if not weeks. This is, this is very, very immediate for us. This is not a chance for us at this stage to have that consultation. That time has now passed. So we have to ask ourselves, what opportunity do we have that we can do? Council's role in this process is one that we can have. And councillor Harriman, in his notice of motion, has talked about advocacy and officers talking to government as well. The, I suppose the issue that I have with one of the points in this is that the council writes to the Department of Justice and Community Safety with a copy to oppose things. Now, I don't know if council is at that point where we are able to oppose things when we haven't had that additional consultation with the health impact statements or the social impact statements or the economic impact statements. We're not advised on those things yet. We haven't had any reports. We haven't had any things. So what can we do? And knowing that this is coming up very, very quickly, we should be contacting our parliamentarians. And I would encourage our community to do exactly that because these are the people in Spring Street who are going to vote on this. They're going to vote on this in the next coming months. So I think councillor Harriman, I think the wording of this isn't as good as, isn't as tight as it could have been. The notice of motion itself is a very good idea. I have seen the exact same notice of motion at other councils, at Carden, you put it up very, very recently. I'm not sure what the result was there, but this is a good idea and a good discussion that we have. But I do believe we need more time to make a decision. So I can't support the current notice of motion as it is.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Councillor Middlemiss, you've got a question?
I have, I have got a question, Madam Mayor. In light of where the debate is going, if council tonight voted this resolution down, particularly on the basis that it was perhaps too wide for what we wanted to discuss, does that prevent at the next meeting councillors bringing back a much more targeted motion around, in my instance, around the planning regulations that go with this? Or having voted it down, does it prevent us bringing it back at the next meeting in a different form?
I would suggest, because once you've put a motion up, there is a period of time before you can bring it back up. But I'll just have that confirmed or not from our CEO.
I'm only talking about portion, of course.
Yeah, but it's still been considered.
Yes.
So. Mister Piasenti?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So there is an exclusion that a notice of motion can't be resubmitted. And for some reason, my governance rules won't come up on my computer in the same, on the same matter. I might have to get the exact wording. I'm not sure if one of the governance team there has it available, but for some reason.
That's okay. So in answer to your question, councillor Middlemiss, no, you couldn't do that. If you wanted to change this at all, you would need to do it now, I would suggest. Unless our CEO is going to give me something else?
Unless there was a motion to call for a further report on the matter as compared to another notice of motion or urgent business, sorry. Rather than it being a further notice of motion. Still can't get my governance rules to come up. That's why I should have a hard copy handy, isn't it, Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, as the question, I don't want to delay tonight's meeting. This is something that we need to go into further, perhaps at the next briefing session for councillors. Like councillor Clancy is rapidly fingering through his governance rules there. I'm, look, I'm comfortable that we can take it away and there's a possibility of bringing something back at the next meeting, perhaps not. But if that's impossible, the CEO has suggested a matter of urgent business, a report on this matter. Does that? Is that, that would require refusal of the matter that's currently being considered to put in an urgent matter for a report, wouldn't it?
Well, maybe, yes, I'd say it was because you've already decided about the whole item. Well, maybe not, because you can always ask for a report at any stage. But what is the report going to actually be about? And how would that report actually field any actions from there if you've accepted what's being put up now?
So I suppose the intention of governance rules is that once, if it's a particular matter that a councillor is raising, there's a notice of motion, that the council not try to re-prosecute that same matter again at the next meeting when it's already been voted on. So in that example, but if it were, I suppose through a process of, at one of their briefing sessions, the councils are asked for further information, that could then lead to a council report coming forth as compared to an officer's report with detail around the matter, rather than it just being a notice of motion that councillor, a councillor is seeking to put up two meetings in a row.
Madam Mayor, with your indulgence here, a second question. If I was to move deferral of this matter, given that we're three quarters of the way through the debate, what would the procedure be?
Now, I would suggest because you've seconded that motion, you can't move a deferral. It would have to be another councillor because you've already seconded this motion. But you can do a.
It looks like I've backed myself into a corner, Madam Mayor.
You have backed yourself into.
I'll accept that. I'll accept that.
Yes, and I am actually trying to find the notice, oh, notice of motion.
Madam Mayor, may I ask, I don't want to call a point of order because I don't want to escalate it and I appreciate you are working this through. I can't help that this is almost an attempt to try and stop the process of the debate for something that's got some significant deficits to it. I'm just wondering, can we continue with the debate and actually consider the matter rather than trying to fix these noms? Because we seem to have this issue at every meeting around trying to make things good out of notices of motion. I appreciate your efforts, but I think some of us would like to speak to it and have the matter considered.
Well, you can.
Madam Mayor, I will insist on saying that that is the role of council. If council wishes to.
I won't go into it on the question. Yes, but I will say that councillor Middlemiss has the right to ask questions. Any councillor has a right to ask a question and we are trying to give him the actual answers to the best of our knowledge. Now councillor Middlemiss, has your questions been answered sufficiently?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, do I have another councillor wish to speak to the motion? Do I have a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Do I have any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In relation to this, I think the general premise of the notion that has been raised by councillor Harriman and then he's spoken to it. It's quite a complex notice of motion that has been brought. I think it's inconsistent with the nature of the legislation. And I think to present it in a way that's fear-based and doesn't inform.
I would urge you caution on how you, how you were describing something?
I don't accept that, Madam Mayor. I think some of the comments are actually about.
You may not accept it, but that's what I'm saying. So I'm suggesting that you are cautious in your language is what I'm saying.
Madam Mayor, the nature of the premise of what councillor Harriman has presented is concern for community in relation to proximity of particular activities of sex work that are not consistent with any activity in Latrobe in the past. It's not consistent with the intent of the legislation. And I think what it does is engender a sense of concern within our community that is not necessarily founded or reasonable. There has been a consultation process in relation to this, as councillor Clancy has alluded to. A range of peak bodies, health and community agencies have also had the opportunity to make submissions and have been able to discuss this, not only with the organisations looking to present the information, but also with government. Community members also had the opportunity to engage Vic, which have been used by a range of other organisations across not only municipalities but state government to inform conversations with community. And that's been reasonably and broadly accepted. Asking us to form a position without a foundation of consultation process of our own is not appropriate. So I cannot support a notice of motion that's been put on that basis, but certainly not prepared to do that on the basis of something that's been so broadly circulated. I'm not sure by whom. I wasn't able to find that out. To a range of other councils with a very specific intent and very direct language that's been repeated here to be brought to a council for consideration. I've got no problem at all with us considering notice of motion, a notice of motion that requests a report so that our officers can bring a fullness of information, but asking us to draw a conclusion about an opinion about something that hasn't even addressed the importance of decriminalisation in terms of legitimacy of industry, standardisation of business laws, but also protection and predominantly for women who are working in this industry and may have had to do so in some fairly unsafe conditions and the provision for their support and opportunity for care and industrial conditions and standards that are necessary for them. It's been three decades since this legislation's been updated. So if that gives any indication about how archaic it is and how out of date there needs to be some changes. Very happy to have the conversations, but I think we probably need to do them in a way that's fully informed by our officers if that is going to be something we do. But unfortunately, this has been in train and the consultations have already been done by this date. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Callaghan. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak? No. Councillor Harriman, do you wish to close?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. And I will, will address a couple of the issues raised. Number one, this council has on numerous occasions asked its officers to extend its engagement time because four, six and eight weeks hasn't been long enough to engage with our community. Two weeks, as I stated, is not community consultation. It doesn't engage, it's great for peak bodies to get involved in it, but it's the people on the street that are affected by it that need to be engaged with, the same way this council looks at six and eight week periods of engagement. I will say it's not about the decriminalisation of the sex workers. What it's aimed at is in certain locations and in certain places. An interesting thing too is point two on section three is that we oppose the dismantling of the work licensing and registration system. That is how a lot of sex slaves and imported sex workers are actually saved and caught out or caught up and saved is actually through that registration system. If we deregister it, if we de-licence it, then it opens it up to abuse from a lot of organised crime groups. That is something that has proved to have occurred in other countries and it's not something I want to see here. Most of what I've got there is about the licensing of this being forced back onto councils, which is another cost shift, which is another area that council has to step up and. and take over from the state government. It's about where brothels are allowed to locate, where street workers are allowed to work. And if you look at point three point one, it actually says decriminalising street work, opposing the decriminalising of street work in most locations. If it's going to happen, it needs to happen in a designated area, in an area that can be maintained safely and an area that the community is aware of. And if they're not wanting to be involved in that activity, they can actually stay away from it. Um. There's a number of points there, Madam Mayor. We've we've had issues at the moment. We've got a social and 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 affordable housing policy because we were having issues with boarding homes. What sort of problem are we going to have if sex work is allowed to occur at home? Now, that's that's putting it into residential areas. And that is actually specific in the licensing and in the changes that have been put forward. The reason I've brought this up and the reason it's so detailed is if it was read through, you will note it does not oppose the decriminalisation of sex workers. That's not a problem. This does not anywhere state that we oppose the decriminalisation of sex workers. What it says is we want the sex work to occur in designated areas that are safe and secure for the community and for those involved in it. And it opposes the de-licensing and the deregistration. Madam Mayor, it's no different that if we went out and de-licensed liquor venues, this council would probably be opposed to it because every second man has got a man cave in their backyard or a girl cave in their backyard and would be running bootleggers everywhere. This works on the same theory. It needs to go.
Your your time's up.
Madam Mayor, no, that'll be Madam Mayor, that's fine.
No worries. Thank you, councillor Harryman. Okay, we've had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour. Councillor Harryman.
Yep.
And councillor Middlemiss. And myself. Against. Councillor Clancy, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Howe, councillor Lund. The motion has been lost. Thank you, councillors. Okay, next motion is item nine point two, which is the proposed.
Moving again, Madam Mayor.
Oh, no worries. Proposed state government planning reforms. Okay, councillor Harryman, you're moving this?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, do I have a second for the motion, please? Councillor Middlemiss, do I have any opposition, please? Okay, councillor Harryman, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This again goes to changes to the Planning Act, um some of which impacted the last motion. Um, but again, there's been a lack of community consultation on a grand scale. There's been a lack of lack of reaching out to local governments on this. There's been a a lack of discussing with the community what changes are going to happen. We had a situation in the past where we've had a decision of council overruled by minister um and rubber stamped. This will open that up to happen on a number of other occasions and broadens the ability of the minister to just approve stuff, whether it has council approval or not. And also opens up that it may not even come before council and may not even have community discussion as part of it. So it's just asking that the CEO or his delegate to work with other local governments in request regarding any further requests of advocacy on the issue. That we can go to the minister and at least be part of the discussion and at least have an input and hopefully get the communities at least being able to actually lobby the minister for any decision he calls straight in. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No worries. Thank you, councillor Harryman. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, I've been concerned for some time of a tendency of the state government to take planning authority away from councils. And I'm just sitting here trying to remember where this has occurred. It's the approval of solar farms, the approval of wind farms, the approval of the location of social housing. Uh, the approval of certain types of industrial development. Uh, and from we've seen the previous motion, perhaps even the approval of where well, effectively they're giving cart launch where uh sex work locations may be established. So I think what's happening here is that the the government seems to have developed a view that you can't trust the local community to decide what it wants around it, how its communities develop. So I think we need to be saying to the government, um consult with us, talk with us. Stop making cart launch decisions to take planning authority off councils. If you just look at the things that I just rattled off then, um quite a large chunk of a community's ability to plan and regulate itself has been taken away. Uh, and it seems to be an accelerating tendency. So I'm I'm very much of the view that we should be standing up and say to the government, look, step back, have a look at this. Why are you taking this planning away from local communities, that is, local government? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Do I have another councillor wish to speak to the motion, please? Nope. Councillor Harryman, do you wish to close?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor. All good. Thank you.
Okay, but we've had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour. Councillor Harryman, councillor Clancy, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Lund, councillor Howe and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Okay, next item is thirteen point one, which is the proposed road renaming Ashley Avenue Mall. Do I have a mover for this motion, please? Councillor Middlemiss, do I have a second for this motion, please? Councillor Clancy, do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. I I find this um this proposal embarrassing as it um revealed reveals a flaw in council's past um policies around the naming of streets. We've had a street, in this case, we've had a street named, uh and then from what I can see uh a developer in that area has renamed the street, so we now have a conflict. My suggestion to councillors that we perhaps needed to uh sit down with the uh the person who had the original naming rights, and there's quite a lot of family sensitivity around this. Uh, and see if we could work our way through. That doesn't appear to have got off the ground. I can quite understand because there's sensitivity there. And perhaps the only way now is to put it to uh put the issue out there to see what sort of opposition uh we're likely to get. We're effectively renaming uh the road from its original name. Uh, I can understand fully there are now a lot of houses on this road and the people who live in those houses won't want to change their driver's licence, all their bills, all that, their credit cards, won't want to change the addresses on that. But this is a most unfortunate situation where our lack of shall I say, planning rules around the naming of streets has led to a to a great deal of embarrassment. I don't see a way forward. I don't see a way forward other than the process that's here. And I understand why the officers have gone for this option. I don't see any other way out to to put it out to the public to see what it is. But there will be some considerable disappointment from the family that originally named this road uh as to the renaming of section of it. And I think councillors obliged to work with them to find a to find a solution which will calm their concerns. But I'm also very conscious of the, I think about eighteen to twenty people or households live in this street. We've now got a different address and to ask them to change back um is a an impost on on people that I'm sure they wouldn't like to bear. I find myself embarrassed, but councillors, I don't see a way through. So I'm suggesting, like the officers here, this is probably our only way through it. But there will be some grief involved. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Clancy, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
Ever so briefly, Madam Mayor, and councillor Middlemiss has said this so well, is it been on the place names uh committee of council, I've sat with this for for a number of years. Uh, it is a very difficult situation, but the way forward uh for us is is to do exactly what we're doing, which is go go to community consultation on this and have a chat with the community about it. Um, council have spoken to the geographic names Victoria and they are unable to instruct council on what to do with with this conflict that we have between these two named roads. So the idea that that um that we authorised the chief executive officer to commence the community consultation process, that is an opportunity for the community to be involved. So this is something that council will go forward and um and talk to the community about. And obviously not just the community within the proximity of of Ashley Avenue, but um but also the wider community, because we do want to have people's opinions on this and know know what you're thinking on it. So an opportunity for people to 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 um to submit and be a part of that process. And we encourage people to to use your voice and and have your voice and have it heard by us, the councillors, so we can make an informed decision uh as we move forward. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Clancy, do I have another councillor wish to speak to this motion, please? Nope. Okay, councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to close?
Oh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Councillor Clancy's on the committee that has considered this. I think he's covered it perfectly, so I'll leave it at that.
No worries. Thank you. But since we've had speakers, I'll put motion to the vote. All those in favour. Councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harryman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Lund and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Next item is thirteen point two, which is a presentation of the Audit and Risk Committee minutes. Do I have a mover for this, please? Councillor Middlemiss, do I have a second for this motion, please? Councillor Howe, do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
Perhaps I should just briefly, Madam Mayor, um this gives the residents of Latrobe City the opportunity to have an insight into the work um of of council's audit and risk committee, and this report provides that information in great detail. And I'd encourage anybody um who would like to see in more detail the workings of council and the checks and balances that exist to make sure that your rates are not misused, that all the necessary um protection is there. Uh, this this committee works extremely hard in conjunction with both the Auditor General's Office in Victoria Vargo and our own internal and external audit system uh to make sure that our system works perfectly. And these biannual uh reports give you and give the public uh an opportunity to have insight in what goes on there. So I commend this report. Anybody who is interested, I think they'll read the report and be very reassured that the governance of the council is extremely well done, but I leave it open to people to have a look. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak to this motion?
I just very briefly, Madam Mayor, councillor Middlemiss, covered most of it. Um, just saying this is a requirement of the Audit and Risk Committee charter that the minutes are then tabled at a at a council meeting. It does list all the motions. Um, the Audit Committee does a does an excellent job. I have a great deal of respect for the for their work. Um, everything would have been robustly checked, um and I have no hesitation in the seconding the motion. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Howe. Do I have any other councillors wish to speak to the motion, please? Nope. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to close?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. All said.
No worries. Thank you. Do, right, we've had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, councillor Harryman, councillor Clancy, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Next item is thirteen point three, which is the proposal to rename parts of Prestwick Parkway to St Andrews Lane and Royal St George Lane. Do I have a mover for this motion, please? Councillor Law. And councillor Middlemiss, are you seconding this? Right. Do I have any opposition, councillors? No. Councillor Law, do you wish to speak to this motion, please?
I think we've just gone through a lot on naming of roads, but just to uh confirm, this is uh development is around a golf course. And the name's being suggested uh linked to golf courses uh within England and Scotland. So I'm happy to move uh for this to to proceed um with the resolution from a council um of officers purely from the point of view, it's it's also been put to the public that have a look and see how they feel about it as well before it's actually moves to the next stage. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak to this motion, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as councillor Law said, uh it's exactly the same situation that we've just spoken about. Uh, two items back, um council's uh street naming policy hasn't been as robust as it should be. Council officers are now um putting together a policy around that. And from now onwards, it'll be very clear to developers what street names will be, how it'll be done, et cetera. This development occurred prior to that being made very clear, so I have some sympathy with the developer there. And as far as it's concerned, I think there are no houses, to be corrected perhaps by councillor Law. I think there are no houses in these streets uh at the moment, so it is not having an effect on residents, ratepayers, et cetera. So the harm done by allowing a change um when perhaps we shouldn't have um in this case is minimum. I'm certainly hoping this is the last one of these that comes before us. The new policy should make it very clear where developers can go in the future. But given that this occurred in what I'll call the grey area, I think we have no option but to support it.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. And I'll just ask for clarification. Um, now, if I get this right, this is actually in, will be in the old or in the actual golf course. Is that right or wrong, please?
Yeah, I I think it's where they've taken off um part of, I I can't remember which fairway it is, but they've cut into that and then re- rehashed it. So.
Yes, no worries. So you're right. Okay, do I have another councillor wish to speak to this motion, please? Nope. Councillor Law, do you wish to close?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
No worries. Thank you. But we've had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour. Councillor Harryman, councillor Clancy, councillor Middlemiss, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Law, councillor Lund, councillor Howe and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Item thirteen point four, which is consideration of a meeting live streaming policy. Councillor O'Callaghan, I note you.
Moving. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Callaghan. Do I, councillor Clancy, are you seconding this motion? Yes, got that. Peace to you too. Okay, do I have any opposition, please? Nope. Okay, councillor O'Callaghan, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, in two thousand and seventeen, we kicked off with our live streaming and we had an initial live streaming policy. And there was some conversation with community in relation to that. Um, what we were attempting to do in relation to live stream, not just because of COVID, because this was well advanced of that. Uh, but it was to provide accessible and timely access to information in relation to the chamber and our council meetings. Now, more than ever though, we've discovered that it's become something that's providing a pathway, not only for community participation, but the opportunity for us to effectively conduct our meetings during COVID times has become our norm at the moment. This policy was in need of review, as is the case when you bring new things into the workings of council. You need to take a look at how they're operation operationalised and what the functionality is. Um, it's to ensure that we conduct our meetings with consideration of issues of privacy liability, but also conduct of those in attendance. Um, there's also an obligation in terms of the way we deliver the live streaming. So the policy that's been brought and the adjustments that have been made to it have taken all those things into account. And they've also benchmarked against other councils, many of which who also have effective live streaming protocols and policy. What we did find is for the most part, what we have available was consistent with other councils and there wasn't a need for significant. and there wasn't a need for significant changes to what it was that we were doing. But we did need to consider, particularly with the fullness of our participation in a virtual environment at this stage, that the work we undertake needs to be considered in light of our broader obligations. That's in terms of how we provide the information. I'll just say, Madam Mayor, I can't see the clock at this point, I'm relying on you. Whether or not we meet all of our obligations in terms of legislative requirements, but also it does allow the CEO to be able to intervene in the event that there needs to be a German livestream or take any action to pause that or attend to it in any way, which we weren't necessarily completely clear on in our previous information as well. I think what this does do is provide us with a very clear pathway around how we're going to operate in this environment, because we could be here a little bit longer. And what it is that we need to do to ensure that the community can actively participate, how we keep everybody safe in their participation, but meet our obligations in terms of the way we distribute and broadcast information. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Callaghan. You actually had thirty-eight seconds left. Okay, councillor Clancy, do you wish to speak to this motion, please?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I should just say quite flippantly, I've never seen councillor O'Callaghan have thirty-eight seconds left to her three-minute allocation, but.
I suggest you write.
Yeah. It seems that councillor O'Callaghan may be copying my notes this afternoon, because everything that she has said is the notes that I prepared. But this is a really good policy. I think that, as councillor O'Callaghan has said, that this environment of Zoom or online is here to stay. But when it's not here to stay, we still need to be able to be transparent and open with our community so they can access the decision-making process that council has. We started that off in 2017, obviously, and it has changed now from 2020 and 21, where we're all at home or in separate locations doing our council meetings. But when we're back in the room together, we will have this system still available. And this policy is a really good policy because it does address all of those things that councillor O'Callaghan has said. It updates our policy. It's a really good policy to ensure that council continues to be accessible to the community, but also the community can be accessible to us. So once upon a time, when we all sat in the room, we would have speakers to us in the room. Now that we're all in separate places, we have speakers come to us from their kitchen tables as well. Or maybe there'll be a hybrid system where people will be able to join us and speak from a hybrid situation where they're at home. And so accessibility is opened up as well. So this live streaming policy is a really good policy that comes forward and takes council into the future as well. And I'd recommend to my colleagues to adopt this policy. It's a good one.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Do I have any other councillors which speak to this motion, please? Nope. councillor O'Callaghan, do you wish to close?
Madam Mayor, I'll give you three minutes and thirty-eight seconds back of your evening.
Oh, you beauty. No worries. Thank you very much. Right, so I know it's that. Okay, but we've had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, councillor Middlemiss, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Law, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Item thirteen point five, which is the tabling of the Audit and Risk Committee, the biannual report. councillor Middlemiss, you're moving this motion?
I am, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Have I got a second for this motion, please? councillor Harriman, do I have any opposition, please? No. councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor. Ms Stevens is councillor's manager governance, is the officer who liaises directly with the Audit and Risk Committee. And at the moment, I'd imagine she's rolling around the floor of her office laughing her head off. Because the speech that I meant to give in relation to this item, I gave in relation to the September minutes matter, which was three or four steps back. And I thank my fellow councillors for their indulgence in not saying, hey, you idiot, you're talking to the wrong item. But I was talking about the transparency that the report, and I'm talking now about this report, the biannual report, gives to our community as to what the Audit and Risk Committee is doing. Now, this report gives you a summary of the work performance by the Audit and Risk Committee for the last six months, and the overall conduct of the Audit and Risk Committee for the past six months, and a review of the Audit and Risk Committee's effectiveness. So again, whilst the matter that I should have spoken of a couple of steps back is just about one month's Audit Committee activities, this one is a six-monthly snapshot about the effectiveness of the committee. Pretty much the same thing. This one is perhaps a summary, whereas the previous item was a month-by-month detail. But again, I'd point out to the community, this is your chance to look closely into the operations and governance of the council. Your chance to be, in my view, as a committee member, reassured that the council operations are very firmly in line and well-conducted. And look, I would commend both those reports to members of the community who would like, just like to see how their organisation operates, how the funds are expended, all those kind of things. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Middlemiss. councillor Clancy, oh, sorry, sorry. There you go, you didn't know you seconded that, did you Dan? Okay, councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak to this motion?
I think councillor Middlemiss has covered it well enough twice, Madam Mayor, that I can let it fly.
Okay. Any other councillor wish to speak to this motion, please? Nope. Okay, we've had a speaker, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Next item is fourteen point one, which is the road register status. That is the government road Jerolane North, councillor Middlemiss, I note you. And Barktown Road Balarra. Right, councillor Middlemiss, are you moving this motion?
I am, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Howe, are you seconding this motion? Thank you. Do I have any opposition? Nope. Okay. councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak to this motion?
At the risk of extending the meeting, perhaps I should. These two properties that are referred to in this motion are on roads administered by the Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning. They're roads that that department has decided shall be an absolute minimum standard, bush tracks effectively. But the one that I'm more closely familiar with is the Barktown Road Balarra section is an access road into a fully operational beef farm. If the farmer wishes to get his produce out to market, often the truck, in the winter particularly, the truck can't get up the road. Often his own cars have difficulty getting up the road. And what the farmer has asked is, can we do some maintenance on the shorter section to bring it up to the standard of, say, a council road? And I understand it exactly the same applies to a resident on the Jerolane North road. So what we have here is two ratepayers not getting the same standard of road access that every other ratepayer in our city gets, because they have the misfortune by some planning decision many, many decades ago, if not the century before last, which has mean that they've been, their properties are on effectively a bush track. So what this does, in the first instance, we're saying to, I think everybody calls them Delwop or Dwelp, how about you do something about this? I hope that's where the matter rests. I hope the department says, yes, we understand that. We'll improve the access to these two properties. So this is the first step. The first step is go back to the owner of the road and say, you've rather stranded two of our residents, two of our ratepayers. You've put them in a difficult position. It's not, we're not talking about a tiny bush block with a shack on it. In the Barktown Road case, it's a large beef farm, a large commercial operation. And by, shall I say, expiry of time over a long, long time, they've ended up on a road that doesn't belong to council. The department looks at the big picture. These are effectively forest roads. And what they're saying is, no. So we're going back to them and saying, look, these are two exceptional cases. We need to have a much closer look. What can you do for these two properties? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. councillor Howe, do you wish to speak?
Yes, please. Just letting everybody know that we're not actually, as councillor Middlemiss said, we're not actually committing to anything at this stage. What we're doing is we're going to ask them to see what they can do and then asking what, you know, if we take over the responsibility of the roads, what will be reimbursed? Because there is a cost to it. It's going to cost us ninety-five thousand dollars upfront and then further three thousand dollars a year. And probably what's more important is it's going to create a precedent for future landholders to approach us with the same problem. And in the report, it shows there's been twenty-seven properties identified. And to bring them up to the minimum standard of a council road, it will be just shy of two million dollars. So happy for this one to go ahead, because what we'll do is get a report back for us to consider what the next step is. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak to this motion, please? Nope. Okay, councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to close?
Yeah, just briefly, thanks, Madam Mayor. The figures that have been quoted are for properly formed, easily maintained council roads. Both the property owners here have indicated, I've heard and spoken to one of them, that a couple of truckloads of gravel spread out might solve their problems. The big problem there is, as councillor Howe says, is the precedent. However, when it comes to precedents, I think you'll find that these two are the worst instances in our city and are perhaps deserving of special consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. We've had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy, councillor Middlemiss, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Lund? Yep, and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Okay, next item is fourteen point two, the moe bus routes and parking review. councillor Law, you're moving? Let's unmute.
Yeah, unmute, yeah. Okay, back on. Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you. Do I have a second for the motion, please? councillor Clancy, do I have any opposition? Nope. councillor Law, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
Yes, just a report back from the bus routes changes that took place based in 2018. It was kind of put on us pretty quick from the bus fraternity, for better of a word. And we went through a whole process straight afterwards because there was people disadvantaged. They took on some notes and made some minor changes. It has been a bit of work in progress, and I think it has settled down a lot. But since that point, at the end of the day, we've improved our services. Some people naturally, to improve, get disadvantaged, and that's probably the worst part about any change. But the majority of people have benefited from this change. And the only probably is the car parking issue that's probably happened in George Street because of where the bus routes actually went is probably the biggest issue that's come out of it. But we hope to, in the next stage of the MACP, stage two, rectify that for the disadvantaged business owners opposite that. But other than that, I think it's been a positive outcome. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
councillor Law. councillor Clancy, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor. I think councillor Law's got it all.
No worries. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak to the motion, please? Nope. councillor Law, do you wish to close?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
No worries. But we have had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, councillor Law, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy, councillor Middlemiss, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Lund and councillor Howe? Yep, and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Next item is fourteen, I see your hand. Are you moving this motion, councillor Howe?
Yes, yeah, happy to move. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And councillor Harriman, are you seconding this motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. The motion is the use and development of land for a car wash and reduction of car parking requirements at twelve Shakespeare Street and forty-three Queen's Parade, Trelgyn. Now, we have a mover with councillor Howe, second with councillor Harriman. Do we have any opposition, please? Nope. Okay. councillor Howe, do you wish to speak to this?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. What we're talking about here is issuing a permit for the use and development of a car wash between Shakespeare Street and Queen's Parade in Trelgyn. The reduction in car parking requirement and the alteration of access to a road in the road zone category one. This development consists of five manual car washing bays, four vacuum bays, two dogwash bays, and one auto wash, which will operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. The proposed site is in a mixed-use zone and is not affected by any overlays. The site is also surrounded by a range of commercial uses, including four petrol stations, shops, fitness centres, gym and a row of warehouses, which home to a dance school, car detailer and a restricted retail premise. The closest residential properties is ninety metres into Shakespeare Street and one hundred metres to Yeast in Colin Street. The proposal is consistent with the relevant objectives and decision guidelines of our planning scheme. As you see, there is also a plethora of conditions tied to the approval, which ensure that it is constructed and operated safely. There were several issues raised during the notification stage. These were traffic impacts and road safety, the noise, unsuitable use for a residential area, hours of operation, the visual impact or inappropriate interface with the gym, absence of need for another car wash, possibility of use of toxic chemicals, insufficient information to consider the proposal and the lack of consultation. Our planning department has considered all of the above and have referred the complaints to either an external party like Vic Roads or internally to the council's engineering, health and strategic planning teams. So summing this up, this is an appropriate development in an appropriate zoned area and mixed-use precinct. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak to this motion, please?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I think councillor Howe has nailed most of the points on the head. I think it's important to note that there was a twenty-four-hour car wash operated right next to this site for a number of years previously. We had a gym, a former gym on site that operated close to twenty-four hours. We currently have a gym across the road that operates twenty-four seven. We also have a train station and stabling yards in the very near vicinity that operate over twenty hours a week, Madam Mayor. So on the grounds of noise, I can't see that being a huge impact. I think most of us that have used car washes notice that they're fairly empty at night. As councillor Howe said, it's in a multi-use zone. This is the zoning for it. It's surrounded by similar businesses that operate long and varied hours. I think it's the place that it needs to go, and should council decide not to grant a permit. It goes against livework Latrobe, and if it was taken to VCAT, I have no doubts that it would be overturned there and a permit granted. So I think we have livework Latrobe. This fits in with it. We need to support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Do I have any other councillors wish to speak to this motion, please? councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the nature of the information presented in terms of this, also the matters, sorry, Madam Mayor, I've lost you on the screen. There you go, you're back. Sorry about that. The nature of the development is consistent with those businesses operating with proximity to it. As councillor Harriman has indicated, there is the history of usage. There is the history of usage, it's consistent with the proposal before us. But not only that, and we did hear from earlier in the evening, um, that the nature of consideration in regard to matters raised has been thorough. And I think often when we get these matters before us, um, one of the difficulties is considering whether or not matters that have been raised that have brought concerns to the fore, uh, whether they're considered and addressed. And I think in this instance, they have been and there's been a willingness and a preparedness to consider the appropriateness of the development, but also whether there can be any improvement in terms of what is, uh, being made available, uh, amenity, other consideration. And some of it is just as simple as, you know, elements of landscaping and that kind of provision. And I think we can consider that to be fair and reasonable in terms of what's being proposed in relation to this development. So very happy to support it, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor O'Callaghan. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak to the motion, please? Nope. Councillor Howe, do you wish to close?
Uh, no, thanks, madam mayor, happy to go to the vote.
No worries, thank you. We've had speakers. We'll put it to the vote, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe and myself. I de- my, oh, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. The next item is fourteen point four, councillor Clancy, are you moving this?
Uh, no, I'm not actually, madam mayor, I just wondered, we've been going an hour, uh, an hour and forty five minutes, whether we might have a, a short comfort break.
Nah, councillors, I, right, okay. We'll have, I, I, I see a few thumbs go up pretty damn quick, so we'll have a five minute break. So, the time is seven forty three. Councillors, if you can be back by seven forty eight, that would be appreciated and ready to go. Um, and we'll just put a break in the, the meeting at the moment and we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. October council meeting. Now, we're up to item fourteen point four, policy position on social and affordable housing applications. Do I have a mover for the motion, please councillors? Councillor Howe, you're moving? And do I have a second for this motion, please? Councillor Lund? Do I have any opposition, please? Nope. Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak?
Uh, yes, please, thank you, madam mayor. Um, what you see here is the result of ten or twelve months' work by, um, by a council. As a council, we recognise a chronic shortage of social and affordable housing in Latrobe City and decided we needed a policy that would guide the development and construction of new, new social and affordable housing in a planned and considered manner. Um, the announcement of the state government's big house build then increased the urgency of this policy. Once adopted this interim policy, we'll highlight our, our policy position until Latrobe City, the Latrobe City, um, affordable housing strategy is developed and adopted. This resolution has three proposed, uh, this resolution has proposed three different options for identifying areas suitable for social and affordable housing. Option one is the council officers' preference and would adopt the policy position that encourages the development of such housing within two and a half minutes walk, two hundred metres of a performing neighbourhood and local activity centre, five minute walk of a regularly serviced bus stop or ten minute walk or eight hundred metres from a train station or a primary activity centre. This also ties in with our live work Latrobe as these positions are situated in our substantial and incremental change areas. I fully support this preference. I think we risk, risk limiting the possibilities with the other option, especially as new residential developments are developed in, in Latrobe City. The Department of Families, Fairness and Housing have reviewed the proposed assessment criteria and are satisfied that it is appropriate for Latrobe City. This interim policy will give the community, including the FFH, Homes Victoria and the Development Community and Latrobe City residents an understanding of what it is that the council wants to see when locating these social and affordable housing projects. The next step in the process is to develop the Latrobe City's social and affordable housing policy, which we do hope to have completed by the end of the year. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Lund, do you wish to speak to the motion, please? You need to unmute. Oh, um, hang on. Steve, can, uh, there you go.
I do, but for some reason I lose that. Yeah, uh, thank you, madam mayor. Uh, firstly, I'd like to say that I, um, support the motion. Uh, um, I'd like to thank the officers for their ongoing work on the social housing strategy. It's been a huge body of work over many, many months and I applaud your efforts. It's really important that we have an advocacy document like this one as a starting point. Um, so I really think it has kicked off, um, a really big conversation for our community as well. The big builders' most significant investment in social housing we've seen in decades and we want to ensure that people have fair and equitable access to social housing. Social housing provides a safety net for people on low income. We face barriers in accents, eh, sorry, in accessing rentals in pri- uh, in private markets. The lack of affordable social housing has forced many into homelessness and unstable housing and insecure housing arrangements. And we see that across the Latrobe area as well, as across the state. Studies have shown that poor living conditions negatively affects physical and social and mental health outcomes. And like everyone here, the health of our community is a priority for me. The advocacy document will help us identify, um, suitable areas, uh, for social housing. And I want to, I also want to say, I do have some concerns about being too prescriptive. So I'd like, I think we need to be aware that if we are too prescriptive with possible housing locations, this may place limitations and barriers on fu- future site operation, uh, sorry, future site opportunities and future developments. And so I, um, in a, I'm in agreements with, um, option one that the officers have put forward as the preference. And I'd like to make sure as we're going forward that we're really considering all possible options and not limiting ourselves, um, in terms of accessibility, um, and for our community. So, um, yeah, so that's all I want to say.
No worries. Thank you councillor Lund. Do I have another councillor wish to speak to the motion, please? Councillor Harriman.
Thank you, madam mayor, I would, um, I would, would, uh, support this ninety percent of it. My, my only concern, and I think other councillors are aware of this, is that I see that we've sped the social housing out too far. Um, I know we've made it within, uh, four hundred metres of an active bus stop. I just look, that takes out a lot of people within our community. Um, you know, I've had talks with, with groups of, of, uh, that represent those with, with, uh, disabled children, that represent those that are amputees, that represent those with a disability. And as much as we, we would love to have equal access to all, they are limited into how far they can travel. My preferred option was to keep it within the four to eight hundred metres of the CBD, the main activity centre, or very close around a secondary activity centre, um, neighbourhood activity centre. Um, but I think, as the councillors have said, we need to have a social housing policy. We need to have affordable housing. Um, I think one of the, one of the, one of the options we've got to look at, madam mayor, is, is actually making more land available to bring the cost of housing down in the area. It's getting unaffordable for most families. Um, you know, the, the anecdotal stories we've got of, of, uh, the homelessness issue that it's gone up because of the unavailability of affordable housing and, and social housing. The, the, the three families living in the one home simply to keep a roof over their kids' heads. It is a major issue in this area, as it is across a number of regions in Victoria. Um, but as I said, I, I support it. But, um, my, my view is that we've, we've widened the area too far. Um, and it's going to disadvantage some members of our community. Um, and I just think that needed to be taken into consideration. But I understand the views of, of council and the officers, they've done a great deal of work on this. Uh, and I commend those, those officers for the work they've done and for the number of options they've looked at. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Do I have another councillor wish to speak? Councillor Clancy.
Thanks very much, madam mayor, I'm just picking up, uh, where councillor Harriman left off, which was thanking the officers. This, this was first brought to us in, uh, in May this year, two thousand and twenty one. Uh, and since May, there's been a number of, um, uh, variations of this, there's been a number of workshops, there's been a number of sessions. Uh, a number of the councillors have led the charge on this and they're the councillors who have currently spoken this evening as well, plus, plus others, I know that many, many people have, um, have worked on this very, very closely. This is an interim policy, um, but this is an opportunity for us to have something now, have something that we can move forward with. So there's been a great deal of work and I think as councillor Harriman has, has pointed out, there were multiple options and, you know, we, we can't get everything to fit. Not, not one size fits all, I suppose is the, the anecdote. Um, but, um, yeah, i- i- it is a, it is a good policy for us to move forward with. It's a good policy that we can, um, then, you know, hang our hat on and, and move, move directly to, to government with and, and talk about what we hope with, that our, that our, um, our social and affordable housing, uh, looks like in Latrobe City. So my, uh, my, um, thanks to the officers and to the councillors who have worked on this. It's been a, a long journey to get to this point, so, uh, I'll certainly be supporting this as it goes up tonight.
No worries, thank you councillor Clancy. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Middlemiss.
Thanks, madam mayor. Um, you know, we've seen, we've heard a lot of enthusiasm for councillors, a lot of support for this and, and I'm one of those, uh, who supports it. The proposal is a compromise. It, it, we've tried to cover as much area as we can, but still allow, um, much better accessibility for those who don't have a car, who rely on the bus, um, all those kind of things. So it's a compromise, but I think we've reached about the best compromise we can get. What we've got to do is take a position that don't buy a couple of blocks of land right out on the, on the boonies at the edge of the town and stick disability, oh, sorry, so- social housing out there. That would be just simply inappropriate. This policy has come up and given, um, some, uh, consideration of bus routes, local service centres, all those matters. And I think it's a good compromise. What we cannot forget though, and, uh, this is, I think, the second or third time we've brought it up tonight, is the state government has taken these planning powers off council. What we're, what we're proposing tonight is a policy where we will say to the state government, this is how we think for Latrobe Valley, social housing in Latrobe Valley should be. Only a couple of months ago, it would have been, this is how social housing in Latrobe Valley will be. Because we, as representatives of the community, believe this is the best for not only the occupants of social housing, but the whole of our community. Now, all we're doing is recommending to the government. And there's a, a great fear I have, and I've seen evidence of it already, that in the rush to roll this policy out, the state government is accepting offices, offers from developers to put social housing in areas which may not be appropriate. So, we've done the right thing, as councillor Clancy said, enormous amount of work got into this. I think we've got it right, it is a policy, it's a position we're putting to the state government. But I would suggest councillors, we need to be very vigilant, given that the state government has the authority now and we don't. Thank you. So I'd like, I think we need to be aware that if we are too prescriptive with possible housing locations, this may place limitations and barriers on fu- future site operation, uh, sorry, future site opportunities and future developments. And so I, um, in a, I'm in agreements with, um, option one that the officers have put forward as the preference. And I'd like to make sure as we're going forward that we're really considering all possible options and not limiting ourselves, um, in terms of accessibility, um, and for our community. So, um, yeah, so that's all I want to say.
No worries. Thank you, councillor Lund. Do I have another councillor wish to speak to the motion, please? Councillor Harriman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, um, I would, would, uh, support this ninety percent of it. My, my only concern, and I think other councillors are aware of this, is that I see that we've sped the social housing out too far. Um, I know we've made it within, uh, four hundred metres of an active bus stop. I just look, that takes out a lot of people within our community. Um, you know, I've had talks with, with groups of, of, uh, that represent those with, with disabled children, that represent those that are amputees, that represent those with a disability. And as much as we, we would love to have equal access to all, they are limited into how far they can travel. My preferred option was to keep it within the four to eight hundred metres of the CBD, the main activity centre, or very close around a secondary activity centre, um, neighbourhood activity centre. Um, but I think, as the councillors have said, we need to have a social housing policy. We need to have affordable housing. Um, I think one of the, one of the, one of the options we've got to look at, Madam Mayor, is, is actually making more land available to bring the cost of housing down in the area. It's getting unaffordable for most families. Um, you know, the, the anecdotal stories we've got of, of, uh, the homelessness issue that it's gone up because of the unavailability of affordable housing and, and social housing. The, the, the three families living in the one home simply to keep a roof over their kids' heads. It is a major issue in this area, as it is across a number of regions in Victoria. Um, but as I said, I, I support it, but, um, my, my view is that we've, we've widened the area too far, um, and it's going to disadvantage some members of our community. Um, and I just think that needed to be taken into consideration, but I understand the views of, of council and the officers. They've done a great deal of work on this, uh, and I commend those, those officers for the work they've done and for the number of options they've looked at. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Do I have another councillor wish to speak? Councillor Clancy.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I'm just picking up where councillor Harriman left off, which was thanking the officers. This, this was first brought to us in, uh, in May this year, two thousand and twenty one, uh, and since May, there's been a number of, um, uh, variations of this. There's been a number of workshops, there's been a number of sessions, uh, a number of the councillors that led the charge on this, and they're the councillors who have currently spoken this evening as well, plus, plus others. I know that many, many people have, um, have worked on this very, very closely. This is an interim policy, um, but this is an opportunity for us to have something now, have something that we can move forward with. So there's been a great deal of work, and I think as councillor Harriman has, has pointed out, there were multiple options and, you know, we, we can't get everything to fit, not, not one size fits all, I suppose, is the, the anecdote. Um, but, um, yeah, i- i- it is a, it is a good policy for us to move forward with. It's a good policy that we can, um, then, you know, hang our hat on and, and move, move directly to, to government with and, and talk about what we hope with, that our, that our, um, our social and affordable housing, uh, looks like in Latrobe City. So my, uh, my, um, thanks to the officers and to the councillors who've worked on this. It's been a, a long journey to get to this point, so, uh, I'll certainly be supporting this as it goes up tonight.
No worries. Thank you, councillor Clancy. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Middlemiss.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, you know, we've seen, we've heard a lot of enthusiasm for councillors, a lot of support for this, and I'm one of those, uh, who supports it. The proposal is a compromise. It, it, we've tried to cover as much area as we can, but still allow, um, much better accessibility for those who don't have a car, who rely on the bus, um, all those kind of things. So it's a compromise, but I think we've reached about the best compromise we can get. What we've got to do is take a position that don't buy a couple of blocks of land right out on the, on the boonies at the edge of the town and stick disability, oh, sorry, so- social housing out there. That would be just simply inappropriate. This policy has come up and given, um, some, uh, consideration of bus routes, local service centres, all those matters, and I think it's a good compromise. What we cannot forget though, and, uh, this is, I think, the second or third time we've brought it up tonight, is the state government has taken these planning powers off council. What we're, what we're proposing tonight is a policy where we will say to the state government, this is how we think for Latrobe Valley, social housing in Latrobe Valley should be. Only a couple of months ago, it would have been, this is how social housing in Latrobe Valley will be, because we, as representatives of the community, believe this is the best for not only the occupants of social housing, but the whole of our community. Now, all we're doing is recommending to the government, and there's a, a great fear I have, and I've seen evidence of it already, that in the rush to roll this policy out, the state government is accepting offices, offers from developers to put social housing in areas which may not be appropriate. So we've done the right thing, as councillor Clancy said, enormous amount of work gone into this. I think we've got it right. It is a policy, it's a position we're putting to the state government, but I would suggest, councillors, we need to be very vigilant, given the state government has the authority now and we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Do I have any other councillors wish to speak to the motion? No. Councillor Howe, do you wish to close?
Oh, very briefly, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, can't disagree with all the points that were raised by my fellow councillors tonight. Um, it is a compromise. If we're building a whole new Latrobe City, starting from scratch, um, it would look totally different to what, what, um, what we're proposing tonight, but what we have to do is work with what we've got, um, and have faith that when these, these, um, houses are allocated, that the, that the correct people get the correct houses in the correct locations. Um, what all we can do at this stage is, um, make it, make the, the houses and the, um, land available, um, for the, for the developments. Um, so this is, as we know, this is just the first step. We've got a, another policy, the, the full policy coming on board, hopefully, probably in the year, which will address a lot more issues that we have in Latrobe City regarding this issue. So, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all.
Thank you, councillor Howe. We've had speakers, so motion to the vote, all those in favour, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Next item is fourteen point five, Kurnot Hall upgrade. Do I have a mover for the motion, please?
Oh, for God's sake.
Sorry. Councillor Middlemiss, you're moving this motion.
I wanted to oppose it, Madam Mayor, but be voted down, but okay, I'll move it.
I'm happy to move it. I'm happy to move it if councillor Middlemiss is happy to rescind his motion to move.
I will, thank you.
Happy to move, Madam Mayor.
Okay. No worries. And councillor Clancy, are you seconding this motion?
I'm happy to second. Let, let councillor Middlemiss take one for the team.
And councillor Middlemiss, are you opposing this motion?
I am, Madam Mayor. In principle only, but they were very soft opposition.
No, no worries. Councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak to this motion?
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'm now worried that councillor Middlemiss is going to come after me. Um, no, not at all. Look, Madam Mayor, I think this is something that's been on council's radar for a number of years now. I think, I think we can go back six, seven years that we've been talking about trying to get funding for Kurnot Hall, um, to upgrade it. We've, we've been lucky that we've had some funds provided over a number of years for a number of venue upgrades, and I think Kurnot Hall has been up there as one of our options. Um, I think when the money came out of the L V A, Kurnot Hall was on that list of what we wanted as a council to get done, but, um, didn't happen unfortunately, but not that we're not happy with some of the other stuff we got. But Kurnot Hall, um, has been a gift to the people of Morwell, um, from the people of Yalorn, I believe, councillor Middlemiss, and from the unions to the people of Morwell. Um, it's been there a number of years and it's served the city of Morwell and Latrobe City and Latrobe Shire very, very well, but now it's getting tired, it's getting dated, and it's time that it was, um, given some love and some T L C and upgraded into a, into a venue that can help serve the tourism push and the business tourism push that Latrobe City is, is endeavouring to take, take on. We have a huge business tourism industry, um, and this would help expand it. It's not as big, and I have to say to the, the people of Morwell in particular and Latrobe City, this is not the final be all and end all. The plans for Kurnot Hall are a lot, lot bigger. We want to, want to develop it into a regional conference centre. Um, I think that's where, where it should stand, in my opinion, not speaking for other councillors, but I think that's something that, that it held that position for a number of years. I think there's, uh, maybe one or two councillors here that, that did their dev at Kurnot Hall, uh, went to balls at Kurnot Hall, went to Christmas breakups at Kurnot Hall, went to concerts at Kurnot Hall. I think there's quite a few of us at a Wiggles concert at Kurnot Hall. Um, and I think that it's provided a huge service to the community, but it needs some love, it needs some money spent on it. Um, as I said, these are, these are minor works, if you like, to keep it functioning, uh, until we can get a government grant or a, uh, state, federal or otherwise, or, or the CEO has a, has a winning ticket in Tatslotta that he can donate to the project, um, to actually bring it up to where it needs to be. But this is a, a minor update. Um, there are some changes that, that people may not be happy with, but I think overall it's, it's the start of what we need to do at Kurnot Hall. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Councillor Clancy, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
I want to agree that we want the Wiggles back at Kurnot Hall. I think that that's, it's been too many years since, uh, since my young daughters were dancing to the Wiggles at Kurnot Hall, but, uh, that, this is, this is a part of, a council applied for a state government, um, low interest, uh, no interest, uh, loan, I think, is the, um, the, uh, funding that's come from this is, um, is two point five million dollars. Now, the entirety would be over five million dollars to get Kurnot Hall up to, to speed, but the two point five million dollars that we have got through the state government, through this loan scheme, it enables, uh, enables us to, to get some of that project done. So there's thirteen key parts that need to be updated, uh, for Kurnot Hall, and they're, they're in the agenda listed, I'm not going to read them all out, but they're, they're listed one to thirteen. This part of it, the two point five million dollars, um, gives, uh, funding a, and an update to projects two through to ten. What it doesn't fund is project one and project eleven, twelve and thirteen. That requires an additional three million dollars, which councillor Harriman has said we will be advocating for, because we do believe that Kurnot Hall, it is our largest eh, venue that we can hold people in across the entire municipality and, and probably anywhere within Gippsland for that size a- as a stand up venue. So we, we do need to invest in it and, uh, and this is going to be that step. Um, first, first of all, to make it more accessible and more available for people to use, and then we'll be looking at that, uh, getting that additional money to really make it a venue that sits by Kurnot, Kurnot Lake and to make it a fantastic venue for the entire municipality. And so people can, when we are allowed to go back to concerts and we are allowed to have their balls in person and we are allowed to go to festivals and things like that, we can do it in this marvellous venue.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I can top the Wiggles. I worked on the construction of the building, and I don't think anybody else on council can beat that one. Um, first of all, can I commend, uh, councillor Clancy and councillor Harriman for what they said? I am totally in agreement. Uh, I support everything they said and they, and they put it very, very well. The problem I've got over the last few years as a councillor, when it's obvious to me that I'm going to lose eight one, which happens fairly regularly, I go, oh, what the hell, just we'll go along with it. And that has brought me in, uh, recently into getting a whack over the years from the councillors. When I say public, I opposed that. They say, no, you didn't, you voted along with us. So in this case, there is an aspect of this report which I want to object to. It's a concept plan that's in, in the report. It's not a comp- we're not adopting that concept plan, but by simply opposing this motion, I am putting a marker out that when that concept plan comes up for consideration, I will oppose it. That's just one aspect of it. I can't be seen in the local media hugging a tree in the park around Kurnot Lake and literally a week later, voting for a concept plan that's going to pave part of that park. So simply what I'm doing is I'm putting a marker down that when the concept plan comes up with the pave for court, I'll oppose that. Am I opposed to anything in this report about the upgrade of the, uh, of Kurnot Hall? No. Do I agree with the first two speakers? Totally. I'm just putting a little marker down. So my request to my fellow councillors is, please vote this up eight one. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Middlemiss. Do I have another councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor O'Callaghan.
Just to be very clear, Madam Mayor, the best concert at Kurnot Hall was Sudo Echo, and I don't know what the rest of them. But happy to support this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
No worries. Do I have a councillor? Councillor Howe?
Just, yeah, just quickly, um, just on behalf of the Tourism, um, and the Major Events Committee, um, our tourism and, um, strategy is based around major events. Um, and this, as councillor Clancy said, this is our largest indoor facility that we have. Um, and if we want to try to attract, attract tourism by a major event, we need to have this, this facility, um, not only up to scratch, but probably, um, like a leading, a leading venue in the area. So, um, hundred percent behind it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Do I have another councillor wish to speak to the motion? Against the motion? Anybody else wish to speak? No. Councillor Harriman, do you wish to close?
If, if I can, Madam Mayor, just, just like to point out for, for those sitting at home and playing, um, what councillor Middlemiss has an issue with is if you're standing at the current front doors, it's the development to the left. And I think that would be the first time in councillor Middlemiss's history, he's had an objection to a development of the left, but I can understand fully where he comes from in this. Um, it, it is, it is a really large development, will take out some of the bush, and I can, I can understand his objection to it. My view is what we're gaining from it is, is exceptional. Um, it, it, this, this won't happen straight away, the development, councillor Middlemiss won't happen in this, this tranche. When it does come up, um, I actually think councillor Middlemiss has come up with some great ideas on how we can redevelop it a little bit differently, um, and I'd be fully supportive of, of that happening. Um, you know, I, I, I look at, you know, how we've talked here with councillor O'Callaghan at Sudo Echo, uh, councillor Clancy at the Wiggles, um, you know, it, it's been a, a huge part of a lot of people's lives, whether it's been balls, whether it's been events. Um, and I think with looking at councillor Howe, we look at one of the biggest events that's been run in Latrobe City was the Maltese Festival at Kurnot Hall, where not only was the hall full, the, the park that councillor Middlemiss has fought to save was also full. Kurnot, the, the, the surrounds of Kurnot Lake were full, the car parks were full, everything was full with busloads from Melbourne and all over Australia. So it is an important centre, it does need an upgrade, as councillor Clancy said. This is giving it some of the T L C it needs. Um, and I, I think, you know, yes, there's another three million needed, but I think we'd probably go further than that, spend more on it because of the value it returns to Latrobe City. It is, it is a iconic venue, um, and I, I'm hoping that with these upgrades, it can continue that role well into the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. We've had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, myself. Any opposition? Anyone abstaining? Hang on. Councillor Middlemiss, are you voting against or abstaining?
I'm voting against, Madam Mayor. Obviously your picture isn't the same as mine. I could see my hand, but, uh, there it is.
Sorry, I didn't see. I didn't see it. Okay, no worries. I declare the motion carried nearly unanimously. Okay, item fourteen point six, buffer area overlay, that's for the major pipeline infrastructure. Do I have a mover, councillor Middlemiss? Do I have a seconder for the motion, please? Councillor Law, do I have any opposition, please? Nope. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
I'll try, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm sure the majority of council employees and everybody else outside council reading this motion would not be able to understand it. It is in what I would call planning ease. Um, it is very hard to understand what is happening when you read this motion. I'll try and put it in layman's terms and, uh, ask the CEO to jump in if I get, uh, off track here, but effectively pipelines, uh, particularly high pressure pipelines and all Melbourne's gas supply runs through our, uh, through Latrobe City on two pipelines. We have an oil pipeline that runs down to, uh, uh, Hastings, or, or sorry, Westonport. Um, and we have gas pipelines running to power stations all under the valley, and they've all been, uh, in easements under our planning scheme before. And the government, uh, a little while ago, came up and said, we want to do a review of all these easements based on what is the likely effect of a breach in those pipelines? In other words, if a crack developed, a hole developed, whatever, what is the likely effect of that? And we want to reestablish the easements s- to, to provide a level of safety around the possible worst case scenario. And what's, what's happened here, um, i- in my terms, not in the planning terms, what's happened here is we're taking away the old planning scheme around pipelines and replacing them with a new planning scheme, which effectively recognises the, the, the likely danger of an accident occurring, uh, and make sure that, uh, people can't live on that zone, can't build on that zone, those kind of things. In real terms, for the people of the Trove Valley, I would suggest no apparent change, but, uh, this new matter that we're introducing is based on new available evidence on the likely reaction of high pressure, uh, pipelines to a breach. Um, so it's on new information, it's based on the best information, so it, this is best case planning. And, uh, as I say, I doubt if the people of the valley will even notice it, so I commend it to council.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Law, do you wish to speak to the motion, please?
I can't add anything more to what Graham's just said.
No worries. Thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion, please? Nope. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to close? Nope. Okay, we've had speakers, I'll put the motion to the votes. Councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Law, councillor Harry, uh, Howe, sorry, and councillor Lund and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Now, next item is fifteen point one. Oh, hang on. Now, we have this, right, we have, um, for those who are watching us, we have, um, this motion divided up into different resolutions because different councillors have conflicts of interest to the, some of the applications. So the first resolution and we're all in for this one is, um, community grants round one, there's eighty one applications in this. Do I have a mover for this, please? Councillor Middlemiss and councillor Lund, I saw first, um. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, before councillor Middlemiss speaks, sorry, I was putting my hand up. No, 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 I, I was just putting my hand up, but just with the attachments, there seems to be an error with, um, the breakout, or I've just been looking, I know that the officers sent through a, an, an updated one very, very recently before the meeting, and it doesn't include attachment G, which I think, uh, refers to proposed resolution four, which is atta- as set out, attachment G, and the, it isn't on the attachment, the attachment Gs and in the new.
In.
Excluded contents, yeah. I just want to bring that up before we started on, I just want to make sure that my, my conflict is attachment G, and I just want to make sure I didn't start voting on something that was, um.
In or out, yes.
In or out, yeah.
That's okay.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. Uh, what I will do is while we're going through the, the resolutions, I will ask the officers if they can be checking that before we get to resolution four, to give you clarity which way.
Yep, the previous version had, had G, and then the latest version that came out tonight only went to, didn't have it on there.
Okay, if they can be checking that. Um, Mr Piasenti, that would be great.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
No worries. Now, do I have any opposition to this motion, please? Nope. Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak to this motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. If only briefly to try and explain the process we're going through, I think anybody watching will think, what on earth's happening here? Council has, uh, a large number of grants programmes, um, aimed at various parts of our community to assist various clubs and organisations with their operations, um, and I'm just reading in names of a couple of them off the top of my head, community wellbeing, community events minor, community events major, minor equipment, minor capital works, uh, categories. Many of the organisations in the valley benefit from, uh, council, effectively council donations or grants, uh, that come out every six months. Um, equipment is given to organisations who don't have the money to raise equipment, don't have the money to run events, uh, all these. All these kind of things, and probably this programme is the most appreciated programme. Of anything put out by council, in my view anyway. What happens here, what you're seeing here, I think there are four, four different resolutions here. We are a fairly small community and. You don't get all the way up through the community to be a councillor without being a member of a club or an association or a group. And so you find yourself in that unfortunate position where you might be voting. On a grant to a club that you're a member of, so that's why we've broken it up into these four resolutions. So that councillors who are members of clubs or associated with clubs or organisations don't get to breach. The rules, breach the law and vote in something where they will have some at least interest, so. I'm trying to explain why four resolutions when it can be done in one, that's the reason why, as I say. It's it's probably the most, it's probably the most popular programme put out by the council. The number of organisations that benefit from us is very large. And I have no hesitation in commending the process for about during two, five times. And I'm sure all my fellow councillors will support that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss, councillor Lund, do you wish to speak to the motion, please? No worries, do I have any other councillor wish to speak to this motion, please? Councillor Howe.
Oh, thanks, madam mayor, just add a couple of things from councillor Middlemiss. This 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 round, we noticed that it was well and truly oversubscribed. So in a lot of the cases, we didn't provide the full funding that was requested. So it wasn't because we didn't think it was worthy, it was because it's been such a successful process. That we didn't have enough funds to go around, so don't don't be dismayed by that. If you were, if you were knocked back, because I think we we found that eleven, eleven rule that were eligible and twenty-seven weren't recommended. By all means, contact one of your councillors, we can organise a meeting and we can let you, we can let you know what happened. It might just mean that you need to draw a couple more i's across a couple of t's. We're more, we're here to help and that's what our job is, so. As as we're all here, we're all agreed, it's a wonderful process, thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe, do I have any other councillor wish to speak? No, councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to close?
No, thanks, madam mayor, you'll hear from us, I think, another four times.
Yes, you will, okay, we've had speakers, I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour councillor Middlemiss. Councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Law, councillor How, councillor. Councillor Lund, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy and myself, I declare it carried unanimously. Next one is resolution two. Councillor Middlemiss, you're moving?
Councillor, I've got a conflict of interest, so I need to be put into a waiting room if I could.
Oh, we finally had that power all the time. Okay. Do I have a person wish to second this motion, please? Councillor Lund. Do I have any opposition, please? Nope, councillor Middlemiss.
Thanks, madam mayor, I think I covered everything in the previous motion, the situation hasn't changed. This is just moving councillors who have a conflict in and out of the, of the meeting, so we can get the grants out to every organisation.
No worries, thank you, councillor Lund, do you wish to speak? No, do I have any other councillor wish to speak? No, okay, we've had a speaker, I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour councillor Middlemiss, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan. And myself, I declare. It carried unanimously, resolution three?
Someone else's turn.
Oh, and councillor councillor Lund, moving. Do I have, oh, hang on, I better wait for, oh, councillor Harriman back in on this? No, he's not, no, he's out, okay, do I have a second for this motion, please? Councillor Howe. Do I have any opposition? No, councillor Lund, do you wish to speak to the motion? No, councillor Howe, do you wish to speak to the motion? No, anybody else wish to speak to the motion? Nope, no speakers, no opposition, it's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors, now, okay, councillor Harriman's back in. Okay, resolution four, do I have a mover for the motion, please? Councillor Lund, do I have a second for this motion, please? Councillor Law, do I have any opposition, please? Nope. Councillor Lund, do you wish to speak to the motion? No, councillor Law, do you wish to speak? No, any other councillors wish to speak? Nope, no opposition, no speakers. It's carried unanimously, thank you councillors, okay. Resolution five, do I have a mover for this motion, please? Councillor O'Callaghan. Moving councillor Middlemiss, were you seconding that? Yep, no worries, councillor O'Callaghan, do you, oh, sorry, any opposition? Nope, councillor O'Callaghan, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, madam mayor, I think we've covered it.
Councillor Middlemiss, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Well done, thanks.
Thank you, any other councillor wish to speak? Nope, no councillors, no speakers, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much councillors, okay. Item fifteen point two, the National Basketball League SEM Phoenix in-season match. Do councillor Howe, are you're moving this motion, are you?
Oh, no, councillor Harriman's moving, I'm happy to second.
Sorry, I didn't.
Thanks councillor Howe, ta.
Okay, councillor Harriman, you've gone down a page, sorry, okay. Councillor Harriman, you're moving and councillor Howe, you're seconding that motion? Yep, do I have any opposition, please? Nope, okay, councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak?
If if I may, madam mayor, look. This is a huge, huge input by Latrobe City into the fastest-growing sport in Australia. And I think it's it's been well, well thought out, and I've got to thank the Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee. Who were very, very supportive of this. Grant of five, fifty thousand dollars in cash and five thousand dollars in kind going ahead. We've seen before in the past, we've had a number of National League basketball teams come down, we've had. And and this goes back twenty years, madam mayor, where we had the Melbourne Tigers, both men's and women's teams coming down. Playing pre-competition games. We've had Melbourne United came down for a couple of years and played pre-competition games. And the huge advantage that has been is that they've come down in advance, they've run training clinics, not only for players. But also for coaches and and we've also had exposure to high-level referees, training our junior referees as well. So what we're going to be getting with the South East Melbourne Phoenix, who made the finals, if I might, might add. In the last NBL season, is they're actually going to come down for an in-season game. Now, this is absolutely massive, madam mayor, this will bring people from across Gippsland. And will also bring people from Melbourne down to to the Latrobe City, Gippsland Regional Indoor Sports Stadium. It's going to be on January the twenty-sixth, I think if you're going to get tickets, you'd want to get them early. But the bonus we've got with this is to begin developing a relationship, which I have to say, a number of local basketball associations. Have already done with the Phoenix, they're situated on the south-east of Melbourne, they see this as their home territory. And again, it gives us that opportunity to reignite and re, re, redevelop those relationships where. Not only are our elite players, but also our domestic players being exposed to training camps. To being exposed to high-level players and and to have that drive to promote an active lifestyle. By being close to people they see on the TV, it also means we're going to be able to get coaching from a very high level. Coaches come down and run coaching clinics, it's already already happened with some of the, some of the NBL coaches that they've. They've already advised that they will be coming down to help out once Covid's lifted, to run training courses and to, to give our coaches. Junior and senior and elite, those extra skills they need. But what it's also going to do is it's going to bring down those high-level off-court officials, your timekeepers. Your your referees, your statisticians, and it's going to open that training up to those kids that may not be. Driven to play on court, but are driven to be involved in basketball off-court, and I think anything that gets our kids involved is great, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman, councillor Howe, do you wish to speak to this motion?
I was pretty much covered off by councillor Harriman, just, I would like to to reiterate that it was critiqued by the. By the Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee, they they asked a lot of questions and they were, they were happy with. The the answers, it is a fifty thousand dollar cost to council, but there is an estimated economic benefit of. Four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Also give a, give a, a chance for us to showcase our, our new three thousand seat main court. And overall promote our, our great city as the country of, country Victoria's most livable city, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe, do I have another councillor wish to speak, councillor Middlemiss?
Thanks, madam mayor, I'm not opposing this, councillor Harriman, councillor Howe have convinced me. I can remember when South East Melbourne Phoenix came up here, probably two and a half years ago. I listened to their, their basically their reason for existence. The National Basketball League had decided that half of Melbourne didn't have a, a national basketball team to support. And this South East Melbourne Phoenix was established. And their natural catchment was to be the south-east suburbs of Melbourne. Plus, their management said to me, when they came up here, we're seeking to create a support base in Gippsland. In other words, SEMP, SEM Phoenix is actually to be the Gippsland team. And that's great, but for the, for the development and encouragement of basketball in the valley, that that's terrific. What just concerns me a little bit is we're paying fifty-five thousand. To help them develop their supporter base, and there's also government money coming in on top of this too. So can I say that, yeah, and I I realise that the committee, the relevant council committee has apparently supported this. Can I, can I say that I look forward with interest to see if we get the support? That this report points at, you know, we'll get that information after it. And I'd really be looking to, to, to see their supporter base from Melbourne coming up too. And and bringing their wallets with them to see that we get our monies with, so. I'm not, I'm not in any way talking it down, I'm just saying. These people are claiming us as their supporter base, their supporter catchment. Perhaps you could help us a little more instead of asking fifty-five thousand plus government money to come up here, so. I'll wait and I'll see the, see the results, happy to vote with this one, but I'll wait to see the results, thank you.
Any comment, thank you councillor Middlemiss, do I have another councillor wish to speak to this motion, please? Nope, okay, councillor Harriman, do you wish to close?
Madam mayor, I think it's all been said, I just, just want to point out, I know, just to put councillor Middlemiss's mind at ease that. The the South East Melbourne Phoenix have reached out to a number of basketball associations within Latrobe City and across Gippsland. And if not for Covid, I think we would have seen them down here a lot last year and this year, just unfortunately, when you've got an empty stadium, there's not much they can do. Thank you, madam mayor.
No worries, thank you councillor Harriman, okay, we've had speakers. I'll put the motion to the vote, all those in favour councillor Middlemiss, councillor How, councillor Law, councillor O'Callaghan. Councillor Lund, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Next item is sixteen point one. Which is Latrobe City Council, our submissions to the state and federal budgets. Do I have a mover for this motion, please? Councillor Harriman, do I have a second, councillor Howe, you're seconding? Yep, do I have any opposition, please? Nope, okay, councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak to the miss, the motion, please?
Thank you, madam mayor, I'll, I'll touch on a couple, I know there's probably going to be some councillors speak to specific items on this or all, all in. Basically with the state and federal government budgets coming up, it always pays to be on the front foot. And council has come up with four applications for the federal budget and four applications for the state budget. Now, we've looked at a number of issues and a number of needs across the city. These are not all we're going to be asking for, but they're the four we need to put forward as our major ones. Just to tick them off, and and others will speak to them, no doubt, for the federal budget, we've gone to Latrobe Regional Airport, a new runway feasibility study. I think everyone's aware how important that, that airport's going to be and has been in the past. And I think with a, with a new runway feasibility, it opens up a range of new industries. The Gippsland Logistics Precinct, obviously located on council land to the south of the railway line in Moreham. Again, hugely important to the future development of jobs in the area. The Moi revitalisation project, stage three, again, a project that council has worked through in the past and continues to work on and.
Advocates.
Advocate for, sorry, I was going to say abdicate for, but advocate for. And the Gippsland, one that's very close to my heart is the Gippsland Materials Recovery Facility or the MRF. One of the huge areas of growth that's going to occur within employment and within Australia is. Resource recovery, and the materials recovery facility is a huge part of that. And it's a huge jobs growth area, you know, people often talk about material recovery being the new mining industry. Where it should go through what has been thrown out and we salvage as much as we can and we make use of that, so there's a number of industries to run off that. They're what we're asking for federally, at a state level, we're looking for the flood recovery projects, the Troggen Recreation Reserve. As everyone's aware, it was decimated and a lot of the users are now homeless or, or struggling in inadequate facilities. What we're looking at is with our flood recovery projects, is to to redevelop that site and move some. We've talked to the user groups there and they're very happy with what we're proposing. We're looking at, again, the Gippsland Material Recovery Facility, again, major importance for jobs. An inter township trail network that was brought up by councillor Middlemiss a number of months ago. And and a number of councillors have been advocating for, it brings the whole town closer together. And it also provides an area of tourism where people can come and just cycle through the whole area. And the final one, miss, madam mayor, is the Latrobe City Infrastructure Fund, which will help release. A large tract of la, or large tracts of land through Latrobe City, which we're hoping. And we know will actually reduce that, that huge impact on prices that's occurring. And give us some land that we can actually develop and take the pressure off the housing and social housing in the area, thank you, madam mayor.
Oh, you, you did well, you just over the three minutes.
I borrowed councillor O'Callaghan's eight seconds, madam mayor.
Or eight out of a thirty-eight, yep, no worries, okay, thank you. Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak to this motion?
Yeah, just briefly, thanks, madam mayor, yeah, as councillor Harriman said, there's, there's a number of projects we could have picked. These are the ones we thought the most important for Latrobe City at this particular time. Latrobe Regional Airport, jobs, we've got Merriam Airport. That are, that are moving their focus away from the, the airlines or airport jobs. So we're hoping to be able to pick up a few of them, I know the state, state count, state government's looking at. Having an airport this side of the, of the city, perhaps we could be that city, that would be fantastic. Gippsland Logistics Precinct, again, there's jobs, the MRF, that's, that's, as councillor Harriman said, that's a lot of jobs. If we build that, that will then attract other industries to be built around it, so. What we do is we build it and they come, so that's, that's fantastic. The state budget, we're looking at the Troggen Rec Reserve, we, we need to up, upgrade or move most of the users down there. There's eight or ten users that that used to use the. That, that used to use the uh, the rec reserve. We're now, we've got the uh roller derby at Churchill, we've got the men's shed looking for a new home. Um we need to develop the football, um netball change rooms, um it's also for cricket, so. There's a lot of users that might have even realised that, that are down there. We've got the boxing, um and we've got the, the pigeon. Home pigeons, is it? Something like that. Um so they're very important. Um. We've got the inner, the inner township trail ra- trail network, um and the Latrobe City Infrastructure Fund, which would, as councillor Harriman said. Not only lock, unlock land for residential but also for um industrial and business use as well, so um. All good projects and very happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Do I have another councillor wish to speak? Councillor Middlemiss?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um pointless me repeating what my two colleagues have covered in great detail. Agree with everything they've said. Um if the state and federal governments can assist us. These projects will improve our economy, uh create far more jobs and improve the livability of our city. Only one observation I wanted to share with you whilst coun- uh councillor Harriman was speaking, I got an email. About this subject, a person I don't know, and which says, well done, Latrobe. We haven't even voted. So we now have no option but to support this.
Getting early, they reckon. Okay. Councillors, do I have any other councillor wish to speak to this motion? Councillor O'Callaghan?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And I think councillor Harriman and councillor Howe have covered it, but I just wanted to. Thank our officers in relation to this, particularly regarding Trail and Rec Reserve, and I know you've been involved in those conversations as well. But the rec reserve users that came along and had the additional meetings with us, um. I think it's fair to say there are a lot attachments to where you have been in place and where you operate and the type of activities you do. And they've been very open to allowing us a level of flexibility. Given the limitations that we're going to face in terms of availability of funds, but that gives us the opportunity to apply. Into these processes. So um we understand that what they're experiencing is not easy. And some of the things we're asking of them are challenging and we do acknowledge that. Um and we're very grateful that they understand the position that we're in to try and further. Forward some redevelopment opportunities for them in appropriate locations so that they don't have to go through this. Again, um but it does mean a big change for, for some of those groups. And we know it's not easy and we're very grateful for them continuing to speak to us and work with our officers, including Jodie Reardon and the team. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor O'Callaghan. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Clancy?
Uh I think we've lost councillor Lund.
Oh, I was just looking.
I wasn't putting my hand up to, to vote or anything, Madam Mayor. I was just gonna say councillor Lund has asked. That she pay an apology for the remainder of the meeting.
No worries, thank you.
Just didn't want to go to the vote.
No, that's okay, because um the screen changed and I just started looking at, hang on. Who's not there? No worries, thank you. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak? No. All right, councillor Harriman, do, do you wish to close, please?
If I may, Madam Mayor, there's just two, two points I'd like to make. Um the first is. I can understand the community going, how come if the Troggen Rec Reserve got flooded, we need to spend ten million redeveloping it? On average, it gets flooded every seven years and we're spending half a million to a million dollars redeveloping it and fixing it up. With this flood, unfortunately, it wasn't just water, we had raw sewage going through, we had black water travelling through, which has got into the buildings. Which has got into the, 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 the floorboards, it's got into the walls, it's got into the beams, it's got into everything. Um and a number of buildings in this vicinity, in this, the, the precinct have actually been condemned. So we need to redevelop it. What we want to do with that ten million is raise it up out of the water, up above flood levels. So that it doesn't get flooded on average every seven years again and that those users aren't inconvenienced. Um I do, I do thank the Troggen Football Club and for, for their patience with, with this, they've been remarkable. And I thank all the other user groups. It's, it's amazing when we had the user group meeting, how many user groups use this facility? Um and I think councillor Howe has, has mentioned nearly all of them. It's, there'd be another ten groups in there using this facility. The second point I wanted to make, Madam Mayor, was on item four, coming out of the, the fed, the state budget. Was the Latrobe City Infrastructure Fund, which is thirty-five million dollars. What this is going to enable us to do is to, we have a number of land developments that, that can't go ahead as quickly as we'd like. Um simply because there's a huge outlay of millions and millions of dollars to develop these sites. What the thirty-five million dollars will help us to do is to, rather than that having to be met upfront by the developers. It means it can be all council, it means it can be met as a payoff scheme as that land becomes available. Now, one of the big winners of this, or one, what I'm hoping will be one of the big winners of this, is probably going to be the jewel in the crown of Latrobe City. As far as, as far as a, a developable area goes, and that's Lake Narakan. If we get that thirty-five million dollar development fund, one of the areas we'll be able to develop is the foreshore. We'll be able to put sewage through. And water through so that we can develop the caravan park into a far better caravan park and make it a tourist park. That attracts heaps of people to use like Narakan going forward. We'll be able to develop toilets in the foreshore. But it also means that it's going to open up all the land there. It means other developments across Latrobe City that are, they've got to put a sewer riser in that costs. A couple of million dollars. We can actually, as a council, not have to breach into our pocket but get it built, get it done. And as the land is subdivided and sold off, it's repaid. So this will be a fund that's re- regenerated moving forward. That helps develop Latrobe City. And the reason I'm talking about land, Madam Mayor, is we just talked about our social and affordable housing. This, by freeing up more land, is going to mean that we've got more affordable housing across the low Latrobe City and can develop it. Ongoing and keep a, keep a, a beautiful home for those that want to get out of uh the disease-ridden capital city called Melbourne. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. I'm going to bend it. You take it over from um councillor Lockie. Okay, we've had speakers, so I'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Calligan, councillor Law. Councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy and myself, I declare. The motion carried unanimously. Now, do we have any items of urgent business, please, councillors? Nope. Okay, we've got no urgent business, so that being the case.
All right, sorry, Madam Mayor, councillor Clancy, please hand up.
Oh, sorry.
I, I, Madam Mayor, I, I wanted to say that I didn't have any urgent business, but I, I, I think that um with the discussion that happened early on with the notice of motion. It might be worthwhile not being urgent, but we will call a report at the next briefing um for that. Uh I think that councillors agreed there was a bit more work to do on, on, on that, but I don't, I don't consider that to be urgent that we need to do that tonight. Um we can.
We can bring it up at the briefing.
Yeah, yeah.
I had exactly the same intention as councillor Clancy, so that's good.
Yep.
No worries. Thank you both gents for that. Okay. Since there's no items of urgent business, we'll move the motion for the meeting to be closed to the. General public. And do I have a councillor Middlemiss, you're moving that? Councillor O'Callaghan, you're seconding that? Do I have any opposition? No. Anybody wish to speak? No, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Now, that being the case, I would say good night to. All the viewers that have been watching us with our council meeting and thank you for your time and patience. Thank you very much. Good night.